Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you have signed up to speak on items later on the agenda, please know that it's the presiding officer. I have the discretion to introduce those items out of their regular order as listed on the agenda. I may change the order of items from time to time to accommodate scheduling, to allow us to address items with a large number of speaker cards, so those wishing to speak on those items don't have to wait until later in the meeting, or to otherwise expedite the business of the meeting. If you wish to speak on an agenda item and haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I'd now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. We're now going to play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Aatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Aatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Hila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item number four, Meeting Minutes. Tonight I'm going to be assisted by Vice Mayor Garland. Vice Mayor?
We have no meeting minutes.
All right. Thank you so much. Which brings us to item 4B, Acceptance of Board, Commission, and Committee Meeting Minutes.
I make a motion to accept the board, commission, and committee meeting minutes, 4B-1 through 4B-6.
And it's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland. I'm going to look here to Councilmember Adams, if she can give me a second on this one.
I second it.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you so much. So it's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Yes. Sorry. Yes.
Actually, I'll do a roll call then. Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Keating?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Councilmember Amber?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next up, we have item 5A, Report to the Announcements. First of all, our mind here. Item 5A-1 is Serve Your City: Tempe Boards and Commissions. So I think we're going to put a slide up here. So Tempe's boards and commissions make important recommendations to the Tempe City Council about all aspects of Tempe. You can also play a very key role in your city. There are 28 boards and commissions, each connected to an area of special interest, such as arts and culture, sustainability, veterans programs, and much, much more. Meet neighbors with similar interests and help shape the future of your city. It only takes a few hours a month to serve. There will be 50 openings, five-zero, on 16 boards and commissions that need to be filled before the end of the year, so we need your help. The Aviation Commission, Family Justice Commission, Human Relations Commission, Library Advisory Board, Neighborhood Advisory Commission, Risk Management Trust Board, and Technical Code Advisory Board of Appeals are especially in need of applications. So those interested should apply at tempe.gov/getinvolved by November 12 to be considered for appointment at the December 19 council meeting. We're now going to actually play a video showcasing board and commission members talking about why they serve.
I love serving on the Sustainability and Resilience Commission because I can help deliver a sustainable future for all of Tempe.
We're so lucky to have such a beautiful city and being able to participate in that process and work with the city staff, who are all incredible human beings who do so much work for the city. It's an opportunity to participate in civic life that I really enjoy.
I would definitely recommend serving on a Tempe board or commission to anyone who is interested in getting more involved in their community. We really need diverse voices on these boards and commissions.
Whatever your expertise is, whatever your love is, whatever your desire is, I think you should give back. I think that before you leave this earth, you should serve. And the city of Tempe has all kinds of boards, all kinds of interests, and I'm sure that there is a board that you might be interested in. So I invite you to serve. Serve your city.
By the way, if the last speaker there doesn't get too excited about actually signing up for one of those 50 appointments, I don't frankly know what will, so I just want to thank each and every person for contributing to that video. Next up, that brings me to item 5A-2, Appointment to the Sustainability and Resilience Commission. I want to congratulate Matthew Nolick on his appointment to the Sustainability and Resilience Commission as outlined in item 7A-1 on this evening's agenda. That brings me to item 5B, City Managers' Report to the Announcements. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No announcements this evening.
Okay. Thank you so much. That brings me to item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss, respond to, or take action on matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. The city council is prohibited by state law from discussing, responding to, or taking action on matters raised during the call to the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. Individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by speakers, ask staff to review a matter, or request a matter to be placed on a future agenda. With that, I'm going to go ahead and get started, once again, in the order in which I receive the cards. And just once again, as a note, if you're here to speak on a specific item, I will call you up later, but this is just for general public appearances. So the first speaker I have is Alana Randall. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Good evening, council members. I appreciate, I'm a Tempe, a lover of Tempe. I live in Tempe, lived here for 40 years, and I'm here to express my concern about the rapid disappearance of our city's wide open green spaces due to the increasing development of high-density housing. While growth is important, it's critical that we balance it with the preservation of open spaces for the long-term well-being of our community, and for our children, and grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. I'm specifically speaking about the planned development in the Shalimar area. Urban green spaces are essential in keeping away the heat island effect, which we're already seeing with rising temperatures. I can't imagine replacing our green area, beautiful green area, with concrete roads and traffic and high-density housing, which will raise the temperatures, and also it's uncomfortable, and it will directly impact our health. Our Shalimar area has always been a friendly, relaxed neighborhood with schools and churches nearby. To maintain our green space, we can, and I think the green space helps us, I should say, reduce the heat and improve the air quality, and it will continue to, if we can keep that green space, it will continue to make it a friendly environment and a happy and healthy environment for our family. These benefits, I think, are especially important as Tempe continues to grow and develop, and I love Tempe. I hope to urge the council to prioritize the preserving our beautiful, open space as an essential part of sustainable urban planning, if our city's growth doesn't come at the cost of our environment or the well-being of our children and grandchildren. Thank you so much for considering this.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have this evening is John Mark Randall. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is John Mark Randall. I'm a resident of Tempe, 79 years. I've lived here my whole life. And I am a over-50-year resident in the Shalimar vicinity. Back in the 1950s, Carl Gulik, a local builder, bought the farmland where Shalimar Golf Course is from Hanson Farms. He turned it into a beautiful golf course, surrounded by custom home building lots. He built homes there. This was at a time when I was a high school student at Tempe High School. My father, Glenn Randall, was an attorney and a friend of Mr. Gulik, and he hired my father to do the recording at the Maricopa County for the lots and the subdivisions. They bartered, and so my dad, for his fees, received a lot on the golf course. At that time, if you can believe, the lot value was $2,600. Through the years, our Shalimar Association, which is over 40 years old, have successfully stopped development on the golf course three different times prior to this. Our United Neighborhood efforts have stopped potential builders and caused them to walk away. May I add my voice in asking the city council to vote no on zoning, rezoning, the golf course? This is a historic, beautiful, open space, and needs to be left, hopefully as it is. How sad it would be to turn this beautiful, green spot filled with trees and birds into a high-density project filled with cement, asphalt, and pavement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Clive Rogers. Please come forward and state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, it's Chris Rogers.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Left-handed.
I was going to say, I know you, Chris, but I saw this, I'm like, wait a minute.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I appreciate it, and thanks for taking time to listen to my concerns regarding the Shalimar Golf Course and surrounding neighborhoods. My name's Chris Rogers. I've lived and worked in Tempe for nearly a quarter century now, and I've raised my kids here. I'm raising my kids here, I should say. I don't live at Shalimar, nor do I play golf, but for many community members, including myself, Shalimar plays an important role in bringing people together in the community. Mayor Woods, I was thinking on my way up here, that I think I've known you now for 20 years, and we met at Joyce Park, which, like Shalimar, is a spot where folks in the neighborhood come together at game night, or meetups with their kids, or just to chat with one another. In a day where basic community engagement takes a backseat to isolated venting on social media, the Shalimar is more important than ever. It's much more than a golf course, but a place where your constituents come to meet and share ideas, connect with one another, and enjoy food and live music. This is not just an opportunity to preserve neighborhood character as the 2050 Plan intended, but rather an important gathering spot benefiting the mental and physical health of all residents in the zip code and beyond. Redeveloping Shalimar will not solve Tempe's housing issues. First, I empathize with the challenges you all face in that regard, striking a delicate balance to serve all citizens in Tempe. It's one of the things that I really like about this place. But I have to tell you that, like, even my own daughter can't afford to live here right now. I've co-signed on a house for her to live in Mesa. This is not your fault, but really, it's the fault of investors who artificially inflated rental and housing prices in an egregious manner. Currently, the 85282 zip code has a rental vacancy of 8.5% at a time when housing is in more demand than ever before. Redeveloping Shalimar will not change this, but it will forever change the lives of all the people who live in and around Shalimar. So tonight, I just ask you, please use your position to veto the rezoning of this precious place, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. And you're right, it has been 20 years that we've known each other, so.
Good to see you.
All right. That's all the cards I have for public appearances this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council during public appearances? Okay, seeing none, I will move to the next portion of the agenda here, which is item number seven, the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest, and if a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. Once again, the consent agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A-1 through 7A-4, awards of bids and contracts, items 7B-1 through 7B-5, and resolutions, items 7C-1 through 7C-8. Once again, any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right. Seeing none, I'll look to my council colleagues to see if there are any agenda items that you'd like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration. All right. Hearing none, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating to approve the consent agenda and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. All right. Next up here, item number eight, Nonconsent Agenda. All items listed on the nonconsent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First up, we have item 8A, Miscellaneous Items, Bids, Contracts, and Resolutions. The first item under the section is 8A-1, which is to hold a public hearing on the proposed land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan related to fire, police, parks and recreation, streets, and water and wastewater development fees. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during the public testimony portion? If so, please get my attention. All right. Hearing none, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Council members, any comments or discussion? No vote this evening, so can we withdraw that? So, perfect. Thank you. No comments? All right. Once again, this is only a first hearing on this item, and so no council actions required at this time. The next item under the section is 8A-2, which is to approve the utilization of one-year State of Arizona Cooperative contracts with Tucson Business Interiors, Transact Commercial Furnishing, Dave Scott and Associates Incorporated, Goodman's Incorporated, Corporate Interior Systems Incorporated, Atmosphere Commercial Interior Systems Incorporated, TAB Office Resources Incorporated, Facilitech, Wist Office Products, and Elantech LLC for the purchase of furniture products and related services. Council members, any comments or discussion? What discussion? Okay, I'm done with that, I guess. That was quick. Anyone want to make a motion on this one? Ah, so moved. Been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A-3, which is to award a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options to Humana to provide group Medicare Advantage plans to eligible city retirees and their eligible dependents. Council members, any comments or questions? It's been moved by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A-4, which is to approve the utilization of one-year State of Arizona contracts with Fishtail Company, Gray Bar Electric Incorporated, Level Seven Technologies LLC, Doing Business as Aspen Technologies, and Premise One Incorporated for data and telecommunications cabling, fiber optic installation, and repair services in city buildings and streets in alignment with the capital improvement plans for traffic, sewer, and water projects. Council members, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Hodge and then executed by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A-5, which is to approve the utilization of a one-year State of Arizona Cooperative contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for two-way radios, parts, and related repair and maintenance services for the city's public safety radio systems. Council members, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A-6, which is to approve the utilization of a State of Arizona Cooperative contract with Velocity Truck Centers for the purchase of solid waste collection vehicles. Council members, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A-7, which is to approve an increase to the contract amount with Hydro Contracting LLC and Metering Services Incorporated for water service line materials field verification services. Council members, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A-8, which is to award one-year job construction contracts with four one-year renewal options to Aiken Gardner Construction LLC, FPS Civil LLC, SDB Contracting Services, Talus Construction, and TF Contracting Services LLC to perform the underground utility construction projects. Been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Amber. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8A-9, which is to award one-year job order construction contracts with four one-year renewal options to Felix Construction Company Incorporated, FPS Civil LLC, and Garni Companies Incorporated to perform the minor treatment plant field site improvements. Council members, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Keating? Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next section of the nonconsent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under this section will be read and introduced tonight, but no substantive votes will be taken. The second hearings and votes are scheduled for October 1, 2024. I see Mr. Sims coming to approach me rapidly. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Let's see here. The first item under the section is 8B-1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from PCC-1 to R-5, a planned area development overlay to modify development standards for building setbacks, and a development plan review for a new three-story multifamily residential development consisting of 229 dwelling units on 7.69 acres for Cabana Kyrene located at 515 West Guadalupe Road. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham. I see Manjulavaz in front of us. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For your record, Manjulavaz Law Firm of Gamage &amp; Burnham. I am here today on behalf of Greenlight Communities. With me are Architects Works Bureau, and we have our traffic engineer. If you have traffic questions, although I'm going to try to go through some of the traffic issues that I know have come up in previous kind of conversations. But just to talk a little bit about Greenlight, and for those of you who don't know them, Greenlight believes that everyone deserves to feel proud of where they live, and their goal is to provide attainable and affordable housing. And through this, they use cutting-edge technology, and kind of they have their own production oversight, and their communities are open to all, and each resident is treated with respect. Greenlight produces non-subsidized housing options with the affordable houses with incomes between 60% to 100% of the area immediate income. You know, of Greenlight's 15 properties, you know, their residents have an average income between like $30,000 a year and $60,000 a year. So it is a kind of a missing middle that we've been trying to fill here, and these are the types of residents that we, that Greenlight has seen in all of their communities, and we think will also, this will be open and attractive to communities in Tempe. You will see, you know, nurses, teachers are right across the street from the Tempe Union High School District, Air Force. We have a site out at Luke. We have a lot of Air Force military, construction workers, a lot of food service, and then store and retail, certainly a lot of jobs in the corridor, which I'll talk about, along Elliott and up and down Kyrene. But this is just a small sampling of the types of people that live in Greenlight Communities. She showed you a couple of Greenlight properties, and some of you may have seen them just in the area. I'm going to talk about Cabana and Hayden in a second, but these are a couple of the different Cabana properties you see. They all have a kind of a similar look, and you will see here a lot of landscaping at Cabana and Hayden as well. The site itself, I think we're all pretty familiar with. I know all of us have put up signs or gone by, or gone by that Circle K. Over the years, it's a vacant lot, southwest corner of Kyrene and Guadalupe, with Circle K on the corner. Just some pictures of the site. And then to give you a sense of the site, and I'll talk more about it, on the west side, you have a lot of industrial, kind of certainly zoned industrial. Tempe Union High School District offices are across the street. You have single-family surrounding, and then you have multifamily up and down Kyrene. So there's a lot of different uses along Kyrene and Guadalupe, which bring with it a lot of different people who have opportunity to live at this site. And just to talk a little bit, the site is currently zoned PCC-1, which is a planned community, and that is commercial shopping center. I think we know the Circle K was there, was originally entitled for a grocery store. We'll talk a little bit about what else could be there, and we are actually downzoning this property to R-5 for multifamily residential. In addition, we're doing a PAD. They'll modify some of the building setbacks specifically around, along Guadalupe. That, you know, do something along Guadalupe and kind of also address the separation distance on the ground floor sleeping areas. And then, of course, our DPR for the building plans. Again, as I mentioned, the site is currently zoned PCC-1, so it is a commercial corner that you see at a lot of sites around Tempe. Then you can see the various different kind of zoning that's going along in the area. To the east, up and down, a lot of industrial, that comes with job. To the east, up and down, a lot of industrial, that comes with jobs, a lot of other uses. You have R16 in terms of some single family, and then you have R2 and R4, so multifamily up in north and south along Chirene. Our plan is to do change the PCC 1 to an R5 PAD. Here are some uses that are allowed in PCC 1, just so you can get a sense of that, which is again, general retail sales. We talked about grocery stores, dog stores, clinics, medical, dental, theaters, fitness centers, commercial offices. PCC 1 is what you typically see at the corners of many, you know, throughout these intersections and arterials in Tempe. In terms of the general plan, the general plan actually had the site more dense than our proposal. The plan was to do up to 45 dwelling units an acre, which would probably end up at 45 dwelling units, probably gets you a four to five story kind of plan, you're trying to add some density throughout the community and as you come south of baseline, essentially south of the 60. And just to give you a little bit of a comparison of what the PCC 1 zoning standards are versus the proposed R5, and then what our development proposal is, and just I'm not going to go through all these numbers, but really quickly, in PCC 1, you're allowed to build 15 dwelling units an acre. Where we are proposing, and R5 allows 30, and we're proposing a little less than 30, but there is, you know, an amount of residential allowed in PCC 1. But more importantly, in PCC 1, you could have 50% lot coverage, R5s allow 70, and we're talking about 22% lot coverage. And you'll see that a lot more in terms of landscaping, kind of open space, how the site is set up. In addition, you can see we've had in terms of landscape area, instead of the 15% in PCC 1 or 25 in R5, we have 47% lot landscape area. And then the park. So just the project itself is a three-story multifamily residential building with the one-story leasing office. We're talking about 229 multifamily residential units, 90 studios, 93 ones, 46 two-bedrooms, kind of heavily weighted to one studios and ones, which helps both with the density and parking. We have a lot of amenities, which I'm going to talk you about, this is not, you know, this is not about like having no amenities, we have substantial landscape enhancements, including continuous trees along the south and west throughout the site, but certainly to help the buffer to the single-family neighborhoods. We have substantial setbacks from the neighborhoods, which I'll talk about. We have 369 vehicle parking spaces, including electric vehicles and 160 bike parking. Just talk a little bit about kind of how the site is set up and our adjacent neighbors. The site is set up, as we talked about during the DRC, as like kind of three pods, and each pod has its own set of amenities, so you're kind of like living within a park, if you will. And so what you see is you have buildings that are grouped around, you can see the kind of the amenity areas. But one thing that we've done is all the livable, kind of the porches, the patios, the doors are faced inward. So while there certainly are some windows to exterior looking north, south, east, and west, we tried to put all the living, most of the living facing interior, so you're not looking out. In addition, as you'll see, it goes towards Guadalupe on the north, we are 83 feet from the adjacent neighbor to the west, or an 82. And between that, you can see the continuous row of trees, you know, some carports. You also see a lot of substantial landscape amenities that are adjacent to us in the, as you can see here, at the southern end of the site, we are almost 159 feet from the residents to the west, and then 82, 83 feet from residents to the south. So we really tried to allocate all the living space interior to the site, surround it by both carport landscaping buffer, and so that we create both a really nice amenity for our residents, at the same time making sure that everything is buffered from the single-family adjacent. Just want to talk a little bit about traffic. We would anticipate 229 units will generate 1,500, approximately 1,500 vehicle trips a day, 94 the peak, and then 119 at night. To give you a little bit of a comparison of what it's currently zoned and the current plan, with PCC 1, and I think, you know, I think the initial plan was to put a grocery store there. If you had 150,000 square foot commercial center with a grocery store, you're talking about something like 14,000 daily trips. And then if you, you know, tech comes down without a grocery store, which you're talking about something like 10,000 daily trips. And with this, you have 1,500 daily trips. So that's certainly a lot less traffic, a lot less kind of traffic, you know, lower traffic, and they don't have, you know, everybody kind of coming and going at all hours. In addition, in terms of kind of what Chirene and Guadalupe are designed to carry, I mean, obviously it was designed to carry something of a commercial corner, the existing traffic, this is a combined number, and I'll separate out the streets, but a combined existing vehicle trip, it's like you have 33, basically 35,000 vehicle trips. What we anticipate is, you know, this site is going to generate an additional 600 trips. So, you know, a 1.8 increase in vehicle trips at the corner of Chirene and Guadalupe. Chirene, as you know, is basically a four-lane road with a center two-lane turn. This is the capacity in Chirene, in that we have 40,000 vehicle trips, the existing trips is 21,000, so we have capacity for 18,000 vehicle trips, and we're going to add 386. Again, on Guadalupe, same thing, total capacity is 40,000. Guadalupe does not carry as much traffic, right now there's 12,000 vehicle trips, they've available capacity for 27,000 trips, and we have right now, we think this would add 231 new trips. This is a site called Cabana Hayden that I think that some of you have heard about. It's a site that's on Hayden, just north of McDowell, you can see here in Mona Vista. And one of the reasons I wanted to show this to you is it's a very similar site and kind of, there's more residential around it, but you can kind of see adjacent to Hayden, it's adjacent to a single-family home, a whole neighborhood. But if you look at kind of 2A in the lower left-hand corner, you can see that is someone's single-family house, and you can see kind of how the landscape has grown, you can see the carport, and then the trees, and how everything is kind of working in terms of how, what the structure looks like. You can see a similar project, kind of the landscaping, what you would expect in terms of trees, and kind of as we move forward. And this is just a representation of some of the other Cabana projects, you can see, again, not only scrimping on amenities, you can see the lush amenities and the pods within the areas, how the projects are interior, so they have their own meditation garden, their own amenities, their own park, kind of go in and out, as I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this, but this is also a gated community, so it's not like you're going to have people kind of flowing in and out. Just to give you a little bit of the sense of the renderings, we've matched the color of the area, color of the Circle K, kind of taken the architecture, it's kind of a little bit of an 80s color, but we wanted to make sure that everything is matched to what's happening down there, didn't want to change anything too much, but we think the landscape would really help bring some of the color to the area. Again, this is just leasing office, you can see the pop-outs, some articulation, we've spent a lot of time working with the planning department, with Ryan and Jeff and Chris Jasper as we're going to move forward. And then I think here, which will be nice, since this has been a dirt lot for as long as many of us have been here, is to see Chirene with lots of landscaping detached sidewalk, you can now walk up and down Chirene, there will be shade, and as well as the kind of, sorry, wrought iron. This is the picture from adjoining, this is from on the southern end, and kind of, this is just a picture of someone's backyard, and what they will see is they look north, and again, from the west, just in terms of landscaping, carport, and to see a little bit of building. And then just a little bit of sustainability in terms of what this project has. We have done some, you know, obviously we have done things to help with the heat island effect, in terms of roofing, courtyard layouts, create microclimates, as I mentioned, we have EV charging, some landscaping, we've talked a lot about desert plants, we're doing rainwater harvesting, and then we'll do some energy efficiency in terms of how we manage energy efficiency within the units, and then shared amenities for health and wellness. So that's kind of a maybe quick overview, I'm happy to answer any questions. Spend more time, I know we have some people wanting to talk, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let me do this, I know Councilmember Adams has a quick question, then I'll get to the public testimony portion, so Councilmember Adams?
Sure, thank you, great presentation. I loved all the trees that you guys have in this project, we're really trying to increase our tree canopy, so this is really, this is really a nice project as far as that goes. Are you implementing in the green building code?
Yeah, we're, we are, some of these, the heat mitigation, some of these other things are implemented in the green building code. I will bring you the full green building code slide next time.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. And I love the separate sidewalk with all the trees.
Yes, with the detached sidewalk.
That looks really nice, that'll be a good place to exercise and walk your dogs. And speaking of dogs, are you going to have a dog park area?
There is a dog park area within the amenities areas. There's, there are different areas within here that will have a little dog park.
Okay, great.
And plus, as you know, Quonis is down the street.
Yes, and we're going to have a new dog park down there. Groundbreaking is Friday at 5:30, actually.
Oh, I didn't know that.
For the new dog park, so, yes, yeah.
Well, great.
See you there.
Look forward to it.
But I'm glad you're going to have one in here, too, just in case the dogs have an emergency or something.
Yeah, of course, well, no, we have places for the dogs.
Okay, okay, great. All right, thank you very much, excellent project.
Thank you. Councilwoman Keating?
Thank you, Mayor, very happy my mic is working today. Thank you, Jason, for that. One of the concerns that we've heard from the neighborhood is the height, they're concerned that people will see into their backyard, and I know you've done some landscaping here to try to prevent that. It's been suggested to us in an email that was passed out that perhaps you could lower it to two stories and then increase the footprint on the property, and that's something that one would be possible, and if so, too, you would consider?
Mayor, Councilwoman Keating, that's a little bit difficult for us, one of the reasons that this is, again, three stories, I don't know that if we increase the density on the property and spread it out, we'll actually get, you'll probably, you'll end up having buildings closer to those neighbors, and maybe it may be a little shorter, but I don't know that, frankly, like a PCC could be 35 feet, we're only increasing the height of these current buildings, five inches, from what it could be under the current entitlement. And so we have a very kind of specific, the way Greenlight is able to kind of keep the cost, and they have a very modular construction, so doing two stories is a little difficult for us.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to address that suggestion.
Thank you.
Because if you could fit the same amount of units on it, and that would make people happy, you know, I think that's kind of a win-win, but if you're saying that it might cause more problems, unintended consequences, then that's certainly something to consider as well.
Yeah, I think it will cause less landscaping, and it will be, it will bring buildings closer to people, and it will have some, it may not be potentially as tall, but I don't think this is actually going to be that tall. What seems like it's going to be very tall is the property itself has been, construction has been dumping on it for years, I mean, all of that is, all that dirt is going to come down, right, so it's going to be level with the sidewalk, and so the buildings are going to come down, lower than you think. And then when the buildings are in the middle, they're 80 feet away from you with trees and stuff, you're not going to be able to see.
That, that's a good point, as you know, I live very close to this property, and it is elevated.
Yeah, it does seem elevated, because I do it by, and if you think like, that's not the finished floor, it's coming, you're going to take it down to where the sidewalk is, and then you'll be a little much lower.
All right, thank you for addressing that.
Thank you so much. Anyone else on the council, any comments or questions before I get to the public hearing? Okay, sounds good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boss, appreciate it. All right, that means I will go to the public hearing portion, and the first speaker I have this evening is Melissa Balkin. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, everybody, I'm Melissa, I live in Tempe, actually live about two streets south of this development. I was part of the team who canvassed the surrounding neighborhoods to collect petition signatures against this rezoning request. Here they are, all 206 of them. Of the houses we canvassed, only 12 people denied to sign the petition in support of this development, that's 6%. So, and I can't even tell you how many doors didn't, people didn't come to their door, we could have, I think, easily had 400 or more signatures against this rezoning request. While I realize the land's been vacant for a long time, doesn't mean it should be filled with just anything, it needs to be filled with the right thing for this neighborhood. And this development does not fit with this neighborhood in terms of the fact that this neighborhood is highly single-family residential, lots of one-story homes, and it actually goes against several points in the character area plan that's being proposed. On page 41 of Character Area Plan, it talks about preserving the neighborhood character by ensuring developments are compatible with existing character and scale. This does not match the character and scale of the surrounding single-family homes. The neighborhood's characterized by most ranch and Spanish-style homes, which don't fit with the style of this development. And more importantly, is characterized by older residents, long-term residents, when I was talking to people, people have been there 25, 35 years, older residents, and the Cabana Chirene development does, just does not match with this kind of community. Many people, so while they've lived in their homes for 20 to 30 years, and I realize that it's perfectly reasonable that someone who's renting an apartment may choose to stay there for a decade, this exact development doesn't really match with like the potential for someone really making a place here, because one-third, actually over one-third of the units are only less than 500 square feet units. I don't think there's very many people who choose to stay in a 500-square-foot studio for a decade and really make their home in this area of Chirene, of Tempe. Next, on page 7 of the Character Area Plan, it's the median ages of this area are 33.6 years compared to 29.5 in the rest of Tempe, so that just like reinforces that this is an older demographic down there, but this complex seems to be designed for younger people. Not that we don't want younger people, but it's kind of a temperament mismatch, you might, you might say. Additionally, the Character Area Plan states the goal numerous times to help people age in place, but again, this development seems to be designed for youth over people aging in place. It's going to make it harder for older people whose vision, who are losing vision, to turn out into the traffic, to see people milling about, walking about, there's a lot of...
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's time, I apologize.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it, actually, thank you. The next speaker I have is Jennifer Legree-Robles. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council members, thanks for everything you do. My name is Jenny Lynn, I've been a resident of Tempe for 20 years, I've been around for a long time, I've seen in bands, and I love this city, so I wanted to just bring some concerns first about this development. I live in the Pepperwood Estates community, bottom line is, this is, this area is 70% rental, okay, so as opposed to the rest of the city, that might be 60% or less, that's an issue. We were hoping to bring in maybe owner-occupied type developments that might present a longer-term opportunity for people, as well as kind of balance out our community. Second, the traffic and safety concerns, my house specifically has been hit twice in the last five years, there's multiple car accidents, the increase of traffic right now is unbelievable. I am going to be talking to you guys more about traffic calming and other measures that I've researched online, but I would hope that you guys would, if this thing goes through, add this in and make sure that that's built into this construction plan, so that we are handling from baseline all the way down to Elliott, slowing that down and making it safer for the citizens and the communities that are around it. The industrial park across the street already presents its own issues on top of that, so just need to be forward-thinking in this. Third, the noise, I know that they are doing the trees and all this wonderful stuff, and we love to see that, we want to see the sustainability measures that come in with it, but I would encourage you guys to consider the 10-foot walls for the communities around, because it is going to cause dirt, noise, pollution, the car traffic that's going to be added to this Chirene road, which has no stoplights, I stress that, because it's going to be a problem, and it does, again, cause problems for all of us in the communities. The commercial components, we rely on convenience stores, we have a Circle K and a gas station, okay, so if you guys can maybe put a mixed-use type facility there, where you have, you know, we're not opposed to development coming in there, it's just maybe some storefronts in the front, maybe coffee shops, something that the community can congregate and come together, and, you know, we can build community. This area specifically has not had attention, as opposed to the rest of Tempe that has, so you need to come down there, you need to check it out, I'm excited that you guys got eyes on it, very excited, but please come down there and see what we're talking about, because it's, it's a very diverse area, and it does call for some additional attention on this matter, for sure. In terms of sustainability, shaded walkways, bike paths, green spaces, the bus stops need to have attention, I mean, Chirene all the way down to Elliott, don't walk down there on... I mean, Kyrene, all the way down to Elliott, don't walk down there on, like, 110 degree day, because you will probably not make it. So, there needs to be shade and other. But anyway, in conclusion, you guys, feel free to reach out, I'm happy to give you some more ideas.
Quick thing, Councilor McKee, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as I mentioned earlier, I live not too far from here, I live at Guadalupe and McGlintock, but I used to live, years ago, at Kyrene and Elliott. So, I've been in that, you know, mile or so for 20 years now. So, my question is, your point about the lack of retail, like, oh, you got that Circle K, you got that McDonald's.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's probably the worst McDonald's in the city.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah.
I keep, I keep...
Feel our pain, right?
Yeah, right. So, if we were able, and I can't speak for the developer, but if they were able to bring, like, retail as well as housing, a lot of the times, we'll do retail on the bottom floor and then housing above.
Yeah.
But that would raise it to four stories, would that make it more palatable?
You know, I can't speak for everyone else, I speak for myself. I think the biggest issue in, with, for us is privacy and how that looks. We would have to see those plans in place. And the other issue is just that this is a rental facility, right? And so, I kind of wrote this to you guys in my, in my email, but I would encourage maybe looking like co-op apartments that have owner-occupied leases, where you have a clause in there, a grandfather clause, that says, hey, no investors can come in, you can't re-rent it out, that it's going to encourage that, you know, forward progress of people who are moving from a rent status to a homeowner status, and it's also gonna, you know, age in place, all these wonderful things that you guys have in these plans. I think it meets that a little bit better. So, to your point, with the right development and the right design, I think we're open to seeing that, you know, we want something on that corner. It has been in a deficit for a long time, right?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Adams?
Yes, you said your house has been hit twice?
Twice, within five years.
So, can you describe, like, what's happened?
The first one was a girl drove right through the brick wall, right through it, and it was, I have a young son, he's 10 years old. At the time, he was, I don't know, about six, and she crashed right into my house and almost went through the house, but, you know, we had some rocks in the front that stopped it. So, that was, it's just unbelievable. And the second one was another one, and this was about 5:00. 5:00 is a nightmare, you guys been down that road? People go very fast, I mean, very fast, wherever they're trying to get. And so, somebody crashed and, you know, rode into the front yard, they didn't make it to the house because they hit the stop sign, which they were very injured. And then, there was just another car accident the other day. I mean, the car accidents in the last couple of years, you know, you have construction on I-10, you have construction around the city, you're detouring, you know, and then you just don't have anything to slow it down, not to mention the drag racing, which is unbelievable in the night. I live on the corner, guys, my house rattles when these cars go by.
Yes, okay, I'm glad you described what's, what's going on, and it sounds like police chief, maybe we'll talk to you and just kind of discuss some things that we can do, because we are trying to slow traffic down. I live down there also, and the drag racing has gotten better.
It has. I appreciate that, and thank you for that. I mean, they have, I can see them out there trying to, to help, but, you know, these guys know how to plan it, too. They, they come in, they wait, and then they, you know, wait for everything to clear. They have people who drive first and, like, kind of case it, and then they'll go and do their drag race. And again, I have a little guy, we don't even go in the front yard. We want to, we want to meet our neighbors, but, you know, it's, you don't want to go out there, it's, it's kind of scary to be, you know, by that road, so things need to happen.
Okay, well, I'm hoping that the police chief will talk to you about some ideas that I bet he has.
Awesome.
So, thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thanks, guys. Anyone else?
Great, okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you. The next speaker I have is Beth Thompson. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
My name is Beth Thompson, and I am a resident of Tempe. And I'm really nervous, I get nervous, I'm sorry. So, and I'm going to read my notes this evening, as there's so much going on, and I really want to hit these bullet points. Just so you know, I am not suffering from NIMBYism, no, no. I am generally concerned for the safety of my neighborhood and the increased traffic. I emailed the city council, and Chris Jasper actually responded and told me that it is legal in Arizona to turn left across double-yellow lines or right, and I didn't, that kind of blew me away, I didn't know, so thank you, Chris. But, it's still a concern to me. You're not allowed to, you're not allowed to wait when you're turning across a double-yellow either. So, I'm begging you to please go to that intersection and see for yourself how tight these turns are, because they're going to utilize the Circle K driveways, and that's going to be really tough. And this is why I need to read this, because I don't know what I'm saying. So, my concern is, these cars are not going to be able to safely make this turn, and they're going to cut through the neighborhood of Brittany Lane and Tempe Royal Estates. I've researched the Tempe Transportation Demand Management, Transportation Management Association, Mobility Hubs, and the Trip Reduction Plan to figure out what I believe to be deflated numbers for peak hour traffic, volumes, and wonder if this is because Cabana Kyrene will have 90 studio apartments, which then provide a minimum of 20% of the units between 81% and 120% of area median income, and therefore, I quote, "shall not be counted in the trip, trip generation totals." So, I beg you, please, figure that out before the next meeting, because I don't know what it means. So, as explained, Cabana Kyrene is going to utilize the current driveways of Circle K, and if you see for yourself, they're tight. So, currently, with the morning traffic, cars coming north on Kyrene will cut through Beldamar, and then they go to Roosevelt to make the left turn on to, to get to Hardy. So, Cabana, adding Cabana Kyrene into the already congested intersection, vehicles entering and exiting will have difficulty doing so untimely and safely, with their next option using a shortcut on Vaughan, past Saleah Park, school bus stops, emerging with the traffic already cutting through at Beldamar. This will directly and adversely affect the neighborhood. Vehicles going to a grocery store are not going to be in a rush, and so, that's kind of neither here nor there. Besides traffic concerns, I want to point out that adding 229 apartments in a neighborhood with already 70% rental properties, highest in Tempe, is not diverse. This will not be, what she said is, is adding to the middle, oops.
And I'm sorry, that's time.
It's okay, that's okay. I have a lot more.
Thank you.
But can, can I say one last thing, though? I want, I want to just say that with your plan, with the Tempe housing and, and the governor, there is more diverse...
Thank you.
...stuff to go into that area.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, so the next speaker, Yvonne Pearson, I know submitted comments to us that we know the council law has in front of us, so I will get to the next speaker after that, is Pete Klemoski.
Oh, is that, oh, you did, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the comments were the substitute, so... No, but I just want to recreate all...
No, no worries.
My name is Yvonne Pearson.
Okay.
I have lived in the, I currently reside in the Tempe Royal Estate Development. I've lived there for 30 years. Everything that these people are saying is absolutely the truth. The only thing I wanted to say, in addition to what I wrote down, because I did say that the train poses a lot of the traffic issues, and that is something that the developer is not going to be able to deal with, us ordinary residents aren't going to be able to deal with. The, the city council needs to get together with the train and see if they can work it out. Originally, back in 2005, that yard, it's a yard where they changed the trains out, so they blocked the intersection there on Guadalupe for 15, 20 minutes at a time, and you guys know, because you live in the area, what I'm talking about. It causes a massive traffic jam, in addition to the other problems. So, anyway, I gave you all my notes and my concerns there. I, I'm opposed to it, I really think it should be two-story. I don't believe what they say about, oh, it's going to be crammed together. If you look at the statistics that I laid out for you, they can easily put nine of those units in there instead of six of them, still have the same amount of housing, it comes down to dollars and cents, is what it really comes down to, instead of common sense. There are three parks in less than a mile from there that all these people can enjoy, just like the rest of us residents do. You've got the park across the street, directly across the street, you've got Saleah Park, which is right around the corner, it's one block away, and then you've got Kyrie, or Qantas Park, which is only a mile away. I beg you, please, please review all of this and reject, reject it. I, I just, I'm at a loss for words as to why anybody would think it would be okay to be three stories. Another developer came in, and they wanted to build three stories on the opposing corner there on Hardy, in Guadalupe, okay, Gin Stage. I got up and spoke against that, we worked with them. They came back and agreed that they would not build three stories, only two stories, and they build adequate parking as well. They could put a two, two-tier parking garage in there and put murals on it that would be more aesthetic for, for the whole neighborhood, instead of putting these up. This is geared more towards college students. This area is not for that. These are residential family, multifamily units that should be going in there. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, the next speaker I have is Pete Klemoski. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
My name is Pete Klemoski. I'm a resident of Tempe, Arizona, in the Tempe Royal Estates area for over 30 years. Thank you for letting us share our concerns. I'm a person that likes to look for win-win solutions. So, I went up to Cabana Hayden to see what they looked like in person. I mean, I went through the renderings, but they're small, and I tried to blow them up on my computer, but it didn't quite work out. They are modular. I'm an engineer, you'd think I'd like modular, but they were different, and they're, they're 14 different, I mean, this, one of the selling points, there are 14 different textures and colors and things like that. It was different. I recently have been going through downtown Tempe, and I've seen a lot of these modular apartments, so it looks like a perfect fit for them, but not in our area with Spanish tiled roofs and things like that. So, we're hoping for something more like another Brittany Lane enclave of a small condo section, stuff like that. Anyway, but while I was there, just yesterday, I noticed it was no longer Cabana Hayden, it is now the 89 on Hayden. I looked it up, even though it was built in 2019, it was sold in 2021. And so, it brings up the question, all the wonderful things and goals that we're hoping for, for this project, what happens when it gets sold? I've tried to get some information from that, and I'm still not quite clear. No Section 8 housing in this project, but if it gets sold, will there be Section 8? We're trying to get low rents and things like that for people to work, that work in Tempe, but once it gets sold, will that be there? So, I started looking at the rates. Supposedly, this was about $100 to $200 lower than the Mark Taylor apartments, so I went to compare it to the other apartments, and it's about the same that, for the existing apartments. So, I'm just curious what happens when, if and when this gets sold, if it will just be another set of apartments, and it won't be different than anything else will be open to the market, because in many cases, the other apartments are actually cheaper than the, the project that's being outlined. The one thing it does have an advantage is the studio apartments. Those are cheaper than just about everything else. So, my, again, there's a lot of these things that were developed, are highlighted in the developer proposal, but would change if the apartment is sold. So, I wasn't sure if there, what guarantees, there are great goals in this project, but would they be, carry forward and reach what we wanted to do long into the future? Because I hope to be there for at least another 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. The next speaker is, I believe I'm going to get this correct, Tia Massengill?
You did very good.
All right, I was, I was wondering if it's going to get a verdict on that one, so...
Yes, you did. Anyway, my name is Tia Massengill, and I have been a resident of Tempe since June of 1970, when I came here to go to ASU. I've lived in Tempe all my life. My house backs right up to this project, and they're talking about these nine-foot trees. Nine-foot trees won't do anything to keep anybody from looking in my backyard, it won't do anything for a two-story building, much less a three-story. They could look right in there. Nine-foot trees are barely as tall as the ceiling, right? And you get a three-story building, that's going to be a lot more. Also, they talked about gated communities. Gated communities might decrease crime a little bit. I feel like they give it a false sense of security. My aunt has a house up in North Scottsdale with houses in $2 million rates, and people just wait behind someone for the gate to go up, open, and they go right in, and they've had lots of crime in there, because I've even been to people's gated communities, and I forgot their gate code. I just waited till someone came, I followed them in. Now, what's not going to keep a criminal from doing that, right? Anyway, okay, also, apartments will have more rush-hour traffic than a small shopping strip, because not everybody goes shopping all at the same time, whereas people go to work, rush hour in the morning, rush hour at night. People in the apartments, they're going to be coming home from partying 1:00 at night, you know, 2:00 in the morning, whatever. Shopping centers close, you know, grocery stores close by 10 or 11 now, so the traffic will be stopped. It won't be the noise and everything. You know, I go in my backyard with my dog, you know, there's going to be people coming and going, car alarms going off if someone did something. And they also say that these apartments are for teachers, police officers, whatever. How can they say that's who it's going to be for? Anybody can move into there. And if they tried to say it's only teachers, police officers, blah, blah, that would be discrimination. They can't do that. Anybody can come into those apartments. Anyway, and the train, they, people talked about the train, and like I said, when that, when they're changing tracks, you're backed up 20, 30 minutes, and that's worse. And these apartments just don't fit in with our neighborhood. They look like, to me, tacky, cheap dorm apartments for college kids. You know, when we was coming up here, we saw some other apartments, and all of us in the car says, yeah, those apartments would look fine down here, you know, university or whatever, where there's a lot of industrial, but the only thing that's industrial in this place is to the east of us, off of Kyrene, and everything else is houses. There's houses. We've got a nice Benedict Park right across the street, where they have soccer, you know, football. My kids all did it. My kids are all grown up now, they're in their 30s and 40s, but they used to play on that field. They still do that every Tuesday and Thursday. So, you want the voice of Tempe to be heard, please listen to our voice.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you so much. The next speaker I have is William Gibson.
Good evening, as the mayor said, I'm William Gibson. I live in Tempe. I live in, in the Brittany Lane development, which is about a quarter-mile south of the proposed development here. Brittany Lane is a community of about 80 families, and approximately 75% of our Brittany Lane residents, based on a 70% sample, are opposed to this proposed development. Project calls for the construction of 229 apartments, as has been mentioned. I'm opposed to the project for a number of reasons, but I will address the traffic issue, and my fellow neighbors have addressed some of these other issues. And as has been mentioned, this project will cause a major increase in traffic to an already congested intersection. And putting over 1,500 vehicle trips per day really isn't good news to us in an already congested area. This is a dangerous intersection. According to the City of Tempe Crash Data Report, over the past 10 years, there have been 154 vehicle accidents within a quarter-mile of this intersection of Kyrene and Guadalupe. These are the, and these are the accidents that were actually investigated by the, by the city police. We did a random 10% sample of these accidents. We learned that 81% occurred during daylight hours, 19% occurred during dawn or dusk periods. 6% of the accidents involved bicycles, and 44% of these accidents caused injury or possible injury, according to the reporting officer. And 6% of these incidents occurred at the railroad crossing, which you've heard several people already talk about, the railroad crossing. Speaking of the railroad crossing, when this switching is done, and it's usually done in the afternoon during rush hour... And 6% of these incidents occurred at the railroad crossing, which you've heard several people already talk about, the railroad crossing. Speaking of the railroad crossing, when this switching is done, and it's usually done in the afternoon during rush hour, there, the trains routinely do their switching and it has been mentioned to you before, tonight, it causes huge traffic backups and it's usually right around rush hour. And unfortunately, we looked, but we could not see where this was dealt with in the Greenlight Community's traffic analysis. The, across the street to the north is the Tempe Union High School District, as was mentioned, but there, but this is where they park their bus fleet. And so in the morning during the school year and in the afternoon, these buses are coming and going. And again, unfortunately, the Greenlight Community's traffic analysis did not deal with that. And we also have the athletic fields, which is, which creates a lot of traffic in the evenings and on the weekends. So a lot of these traffic issues that we're mentioning tonight were not analyzed by the, by the Greenlight Community's traffic analysis. And we have a lot of semi-truck traffic from the commercial industrial area that's coming out on Kyrene constantly. And so in five seconds, I therefore respectfully request that this zoning application be reevaluated and that a more compatible land use such as single-family be considered instead.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight. I keep it very simple. I don't like the project. I don't think it's appropriate for our area, as other people have said. The construction, I went on site on Greenlight and they have a picture of their crew and a, and a building that is in process of being constructed. I don't think it's constructed with quality. If this lady can tell me differently, then I'll be willing to listen. But my, my family, my fathers, my, my father, my grandfather's well on construction, so I do have some knowledge about what would be safely be constructed. When I first saw the picture from overhead, I thought it was either dormitories or penitentiary. I'm sorry, I just, I'm not for this at all, whether it's two stories or three. My question is, how long does, does Greenlight plan to hold this? When do they plan to sell it? I think, I think we have a right to know that because things will possibly change when the ownership changes. Is the manager going to be on site? I assume it will be. I would like to know what the materials are going to be in the construction of these buildings. I don't know if, I, I send a message to Mr. Jasper and he sent back to me that he was going to be on vacation and wouldn't be back till the 20th, which I appreciate it. But then in just a little while, he sent me over the packet, which I have not had time to go through completely. But I would like to know a few things. Are there gonna be retention areas that are usually required in, in these type of things? I think the traffic is a very important part coming out of those two egresses. People are gonna be held up. And if, I don't know how they plan to solve that, or if they do. Sometimes we have a bus that stops right there by Kyrene and when you're trying to turn left and you've got another problem. So my vote is no for this. It doesn't fit in. I've been in the, the area, my home, 40 years. I've been in Tempe 82 years. I've grown up here, I've seen lots of changes, some good, some not. And I would appreciate your giving some consideration to what has been brought before you tonight. My other question I'm going to leave with, that you may not appreciate, but I would like to know who the owner of the property was that sold it to Greenlight. I know you can't answer that question tonight. My phone number is on the card and I'd be happy to hear from someone on that.
Thank you, appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, Kim Gaffney Loza. I'm a resident of North Tempe and I understand how it feels to have somebody from another neighborhood come forward and talk about a development in your neighborhood. We've had that happen in our neighborhood on developments that we've wanted and we've had people from South Tempe come and speak against it. I, I looked at the property and from what I understand, this lot has been vacant for quite a while. So I was kind of surprised by the fact that people were worried about safety, because to me, having that lot there, especially with the Circle K, because we know the Circle K's are notorious for calls for service. I don't know if this one has been or not, but throughout the city they have been. So to me, we found in parks, when you activate an area, it actually makes it safer. I understand that the design is not the same as these homes that have been there for quite a while, but architecture has changed in their design and different designs appeal to different people. What I liked about the development, first of all, that it's workforce and obviously we need some lower housing costs. It can always be sold, that's true. Somebody's house can always be sold. And we've seen several of those happen in my neighborhood where the, the seller was assured that the person was gonna live in the house and the next thing we know, it turned into a short-term rental. So there's no guarantees with that. You never know, you know, what's gonna happen in the future in that regards. But what I liked about it was the amount of landscaping on that property. And I know there's parks nearby, but I don't think there's any substitute for living within a green space. We heard about that with Shalimar. I would think the neighbors would like the extra landscaping for the cooling effect, the buffering noise of noise from the traffic. I think even the three-story buildings would help buffer the noise of the traffic. Now, I didn't go through this area at rush hour. I think I went through it right about 9 o'clock in the morning, so it was probably a little bit after that. And I pulled into the Circle K there to look. I didn't have any problem with the traffic. I can under, I did get stuck by the train. It wasn't for 20 minutes, but I did get stuck by, by the train. So I understand that's a concern, but I don't think that's a problem of the developer at all. And I did see that there were bus lines in the area, which I think would help with people that would be living in that area. And, you know, maybe the developer would be, consider, you know, putting in a covered bus stop. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Randall Sacala. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Randall Sacala. I'm a resident of Tempe. I have a home just southwest of this project in the Tempe Royal Estates neighborhood. I've been passing by the intersection there at Kyrene and Guadalupe and I noticed a few months ago, there was a sign. I wasn't able to read it, but it was clear some sort of development was coming. And so I assumed and watched for a notice of some kind to come in the mail to learn more about it, but I never received anything. So I missed the initial June 18th neighborhood meeting, as well as the subsequent DRC meeting, apparently held on August 27th. However, I wasn't too concerned because I'd heard that a developer was planning an attainable housing project. And I thought, great, that's just what we need is, in our community, is some more smaller, you know, starter homes, maybe some condominiums, the type of housing that creates a stable environment for the owners of the neighborhood and a chance for maybe younger families to get a foot in the door for homeownership. So that vision was busted, busted me like a punch in the gut when I finally learned just recently that the attainable housing is going to be a group of 13, let me repeat that, 13, not six, three-story motel-style dorm-looking structures. I figured this has to be a mistake. I was sure the Department of Planning and Zoning had our backs and would certainly never entertain this urban motel-looking structure could be built in our mature, established neighborhood consisting of mostly single-family, single-story residential homes. So I was very disappointed to learn they had approved it seven to nothing. There's not a single three-story home or three-story building anywhere in the neighborhood or along quite Kyrene or Guadalupe for, for a good long distance, for that matter. This will look like a motel complex and will stick out like a sore thumb in an area dominated by single-story structures. And I take full responsibility for not being more aware of this sooner, but it seems inappropriate at best that out of the hundreds of homeowners in that area, notices were apparently only sent to 75 of them, sent only to adjacent properties and were those within a stone's throw of the property line of that development. That may be meeting the legal minimums, but it doesn't seem right to me in this case. As the details of this proposed development have just recently started to spread to many other stakeholders in the area, I understand that the city has now received petitions with over 200 signatures objecting to this, to this development and I expect many more objections will be coming. This type of property may be fine in downtown Tempe, near the college, but here in rural southwest Tempe, it's not a right development for this location. I urge you not to vote today, tonight, take this up under consideration.
Thank you, appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Amber Wheeler. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Amber Wheeler and I live in Tempe, just really near the development that they're trying to plan. I'm really nervous, so I'm probably just gonna read my notes here. I believe this project should not be approved, in my opinion. I grew up in Tempe and I've lived in the area for over 30 years. I feel like we should preserve the neighborhood character by leaving it as commercial or, at the very least, offering some opportunities for homeownership. If you need more housing, a great compromise, I feel like, would be patio homes like the ones in Brittany Lane. Having a three-story apartment complex, especially with that color scheme, I feel like it would stand out like a sore thumb. The unit sizes of the proposed apartments here are not conducive to a family with the 400 to 800 square foot sizes. This seems more like, like dorms, in my opinion, for the size of the building and units. I, I would prefer to save something like this for North Tempe, just because the, I just don't feel like it fits the character development. But the renter density in our area exceeds 70% already when there's a 60% citywide. We are to encourage aging in place and this also does not fit that goal. If this is something you already intend on having, if you could please somehow make sure that they construct their own eight-foot decorative masonry wall along the south and west perimeters of the parcel that meets the Tempe Royal Estate properties. Or work with those property owners to increase the height of the entire perimeter on the south and west and to paint the entire wall to make it decorative as per the building code, Section 4, 706, which calls for an eight-foot wall supposedly. And last but not least, the, I would just ask if the developer would only install natural grass and not the artificial turf, because they're finding it's a, that it can pollute the groundwater and especially to kids and pets, this is a risk. Per Kyla Bennett, she's a Director of Science Policy, Public Employees for Environmental Responsibility, nationally-known scientist, she worked for the EPA and also appeared in an interview here in Phoenix on Channel 12 explaining how artificial grass contains PFAS microplastics. They're forever chemicals and the artificial turf also gets significantly hotter. So, but really, I just echo everyone's statements that it just, they look like dorms and I just wish you'd reconsider three stories, please.
Thank you, appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Joseph Cardella. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Joseph Cardella. I live in Tempe, Arizona, been here almost two decades. I'm here to support this. I think that bringing more workforce housing to the city of Tempe would be a great thing. The development, while I understand there are some concerns about maybe the layout or the way it's being constructed, they're doing things that are mitigating of that with the trees and the different developments of having everything face inward. I mean, where I live, they did something similar and I had concerns and what ended up happening is people that I know that were graduating from ASU at the time actually had somewhere to go live. They didn't have to move outside of the city that they had been enjoying for the last four years. Making this something that people can move to, maybe to South Tempe, North Tempe, say in Tempe, support this. I know Elliott and Kyrene is being developed, there's all sorts of businesses that are occurring. There's the coffee shop just opened up at Elliott and Kyrene, there's the, all the restaurants just to the east of that by the Chase Bank. All those police, all those places have people that need to work there and they also need to live somewhere. A lot of them have to live outside of the city because they can't afford the rent, especially in this area. The rents are high, you have to rent a house. So I'm a big proponent of having more workforce housing for people that need somewhere to live, that can't afford such expensive houses or an entire house. They, they only need one bedroom or, or a studio. And so for that reason, I think that this area, it's right next to Circle K, on the outside of the, the neighborhood, on a major intersection, what I consider to be a relatively major intersection that could support the additional traffic, I think this would be a great thing. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Janet Hamlin. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Excuse me, my name is Janet Hamlin. I am reading a letter on behalf of my friend Shelby Creek, who is working in the emergency room tonight. My name is Shelby Creek. I'd like to address the proposed workforce Cabana Kyrene Community. I'm a 34-year-old registered nurse and have been a resident of Tempe since 1993. I love this city and hope to continue to reside here for many years to come. I'm currently renting an apartment in Tempe, but the rising cost of rentals in the city is making it almost impossible to stay. One more increase in rental rates and I'll be forced to look in another city for affordable housing. My income as a nurse is above what many my age earn and I'm still struggling month to month to pay my bills. A community like Cabana Kyrene would be a benefit to myself and other young professionals. I understand from news articles that opposition to the project has cited an increase in crime if this community is built. I have to disagree with that assessment. If anything, I believe building Cabana Kyrene would enrich the community by attracting young professionals who would boost the local economy by supporting small businesses. Because it is aimed at young professionals like teachers, police, nurses, et cetera, I don't foresee a large unwelcome population moving in. A community like this would give young professionals an affordable option to live near other like-minded individuals for an affordable rent, which would enable them to live a more sustainable lifestyle. I know many people my age have little hope of ever being able to afford a home and even the cost of apartment living is becoming untenable despite earning a decent income. A community like Cabana Kyrene would give relief to valuable members of the community. I see this as a bonus to Tempe, not a detriment to the character of the area. I hope the members of the Tempe City Council and community members will consider my views and approve this valuable addition to South Tempe, Shelby Creek, Tempe, Arizona.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. That's all the cards I have this evening on that item. Oh, I see one more. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lane Keraway. I live in Tempe. I am a citizen of over 30 years. I am here to support this project. When I found out it was workforce housing, I was like, wow, this is great. Then I started reading all the social media posts trying to destroy this project and it kind of took me back for a second because I live in North Tempe and we just had this whole issue a few months back where we had a big project and all these people came up and spoke against it, wanting affordable housing, workforce housing. And I feel like I'm in a bizarre world at this point because one minute you want affordable housing, next minute you don't want it. I realized this property has been vacant for umpteen years. I realize this property has been vacant for umpteen years, but if you go any city, Tempe, Scottsdale, Mesa, Phoenix, older residential homes like mine, built in the 60s, we have new projects going up in there. And they are different, they're not gonna look like our little single-story homes, but what do they contribute to the community? We need those type of apartment complexes. We need people that are starting out that can be part of Tempe, because Tempe has outrageous rates, and you're not assured of anything, just like Kim said. I thought I lucked out, my neighbor sold his house, I have probably the worst Airbnb around town. Right now, there's like 16 girls drinking, partying up at my house. So you're not assured of anything at this point when it comes to residential or businesses. And that's all I have to say, but I think this is a great project, I think the developer is working, and I think the developer is gonna come back with a lot of information tonight from these citizens, and hopefully they can work it out, and everybody live happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next card I have this evening is from Hillary Golson. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi there, I'm Hillary Golson, I hadn't planned anything, but I actually live in Brittany Lane, a couple streets down. I'm a teacher myself, I teach at Tempe Elementary District. So I live here, I work here, and I would be one of those prime candidates for that area, but I am absolutely in opposition of it. The reason being is, A, you've already heard tonight that the prices aren't really all that much more affordable than the other rentals around it. Secondly, it's one of those things where there's the traffic issues that they've talked about, like I don't have anything unfortunately new to really point out, other than I'm one of those people that they would say that they're targeting, and I know for a fact that that is not that much more affordable, from looking at the prices of what they were looking at online. And I also don't think that it meets the character area plan with a three-story building. I think that that would, like they were saying, promote more of a younger clientele, not necessarily people like teachers and nurses and things like that, that are going to want to look for, if they were still renting, a property that might look more well put together, I guess you could say, a little less modular style, and a little bit more like a more luxury look is probably what those types of workers would be looking for. So that's just kind of what I was...it made me want to speak tonight, because I know there was, you know, the side of the nurse people, but then there's, you know, me as well, as a teacher, and I don't feel like it fits our character area plan at all. They talked about first-time homebuyers in our character area plan when I had gone to one of those meetings, and I...this doesn't allow for first-time homebuying opportunities at all, and I do also question that point of what happens when they sell it. So I don't have much more, but I just wanted to say I am opposed as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. That's all the cards I have this evening, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing no more, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and I know there were councilmembers that did have comments, any councilmembers, comments or questions? Or Ms. Fosse, would you like to come back up? Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Fosse, I, after listening to residents and after reading through the presentation, I have some questions for clarification, for me to better understand it. I am going to ask you to go through, first, the first slide where you...it was actually an actual picture of one of the other cabana, and it showed...what I'm looking at is the setback and the trees.
Okay. Do you want that one, or that picture?
It was actually...
I think it was a one in Scottsdale.
Yeah, I think so. Of an example, yes. So I'm looking at picture 1B specifically.
Okay.
So looking at the numbers you provided, you have an 82-feet setback?
Yes, at a minimum.
Minimum 82 feet, okay. So one of the questions was, could you lower it and spread it out? That would cut into that setback then, right?
Yeah, it would make it wider.
Right, so you wouldn't have 82 feet or more.
Yeah, it'll become closer.
Okay, and so there was another...you don't need to find it unless you know where it is, but it's an aerial view of the plans, and you see the trees and the setback included, yes. So this was interesting, and you said the units are inward-facing.
Yes.
And you have a setback, and you have the tree canopy for privacy.
Yeah.
And as an additional security and privacy. And I recall some of the other projects in Tempe where I learned this, the angle of how it's built and the privacy, have you all considered that as you designed that?
Yes, yes. And, you know, the other issue is, you know, it's kind of higher at the edges, and then obviously it's going down, right? So that the buildings itself are probably a little less than 40, with like 40 feet at the carport. And just as an aside, if you remember, the site is zoned PCC, which allows 35 feet.
Yep.
So the answer, you know, it's already entitled to have 35 feet. We're gonna be approximately 39 feet, it's four inches.
Okay.
You know, versus, and that's the top of the roof, it's not somebody's window, so somebody's window is less than that.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned traffic, let's go to one of your first slides where you talk about the average...well, no, go back to the other one, that one. That was interesting to me, because...so the current zoning is for commercial. So some of the residents mentioned, well, we'd rather have it commercial, a store or something, but that would actually provide increased traffic, but if we...if the zoning is approved to residential, it's going to decrease the traffic in that area.
Yes, this is really a downzoning from its current entitlement.
Okay, just clarifying. Final question, so, and of interest to me is the workforce housing necessary in our community, we...our inventory is low on that. So this caught my attention. Can you tell me what percentage of the units will be offered at workforce housing?
All of them. I mean, all of them are within this range, so they all are, the one-bedrooms are about 1,400, maybe 1,300, the two-bedrooms, the studios are 15, the two-bedrooms are about 16. So when you take $1,600 divided by two, it's $800 a month, right? For when you hit that range between...
So 100%?
Yeah, there, approximately.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Clarification, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin, Councilmember Hatch?
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that I am a governing board member for Tempe Union, and we did receive numerous from our teachers in our district saying that they would be approving this because they do want more housing, and we do, I guess we have a population of teachers who don't live in our city, who do want to live in our city. So I just wanted, just like how the nurse, I wanted to put that out there, that was something that the teachers at Tempe Union has clarified with us, that they were excited to have something so close, and it's in a central area between the pockets of all the schools around that area, so I just wanted our, my council to hear that, that I'm getting that information, that they are actually excited about living closer to their schools that they actually work at, because we have teachers that are coming all the way from Glendale, because they can't afford to live in the area where they're at, so that's all I wanted to make sure.
Thank you, councilmember, and Mayor, councilmember, to add to that, you know, we have been working with the school districts, and one of the things, I think, maybe we can talk a little bit about, is how we ensure who lives here, and one of the things we've been talking to the elementary school districts about, and some of the, is there's some other, the police and other people, is prior leasing, like we will go, before we start leasing up, kind of make sure that we have partnerships with the school district, with the city, with the police offices, with the retail in the area, to make sure that we have the people in the area who, to kind of, who can, this will best serve. And we've already started those conversations before, we're kind of starting there to make sure that we, people understood what was happening and what was coming down.
Just really quickly, I want to go to Vice Mayor Garland, so you're saying that you, the intention is to do priority leasing to groups like teachers and first responders, people of that nature, before you would open it up to just sort of the general public to lease these units?
Yes, that is our, that is our current plan, and we've already started that outreach.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
Thank you for that clarification, that's good to know, thank you. You know, one of the things I was thinking about, and Councilmember Chin kind of talked about it a little bit, is the distance between somebody's backyard to the units that you have. And I don't know if this is in city law or code, but there is a Safeway by me, I'm trying to think of the other, there's a Fry's by me, and if I think about what that looks like between the back of the Safeway and my best friend's house sits right next to it, I could walk three steps and hit the Safeway wall from her back wall. So I don't know if there's a coating or something, that if we were put, if they were to leave it the way it is, that that, those back of the grocery stores would be right to the back of the residence. So I like the fact that you're looking at this and trying to pay attention and be respectful of the residents' backyards and backyard way that you've arranged this, so I like the way that it's arranged. I completely appreciate and thanks so much for the residents who've come in here to speak tonight, because it's really important that no matter how we vote on this or how we look at this, it is absolutely incredibly important that you come in and take the time to visit with us, to take us out for coffee, and we can, or I'll buy you coffee, but we sit down and talk about this because it's important that we hear from you. You know, but the thing that I realize with this and recognize is that we are, we do have a missing middle issue, we do have those concerns, we do need to be looking at workforce housing. So I do appreciate what you had said, Corey, about making sure that you're gonna be looking and addressing this to certain people first. One of the things that I was gonna ask you about is, one of the concerns from, one of the gentleman that was talking about, and a few people that are talking about, the modular look, modular look, it's a taste whether you like that kind of look or not, but one of the concerns was the color, that it's not Spanish-style, that looks like the rest. Is it possible to make some adjustments on this that would make, change the colors that the residents might like a little bit better, or to make it look a little more Spanish-style, is that possible to do on this?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, let us take a look, it's possible certainly to change the color, for sure, we can change the color. I mean, it's not modular buildings, I mean, I understand that they may not like the kind of modern square look that you see in other places, pick the color is based on kind of the colors that are up and down Kyrene, but we can certainly change the color. As you know, I like to put green, but then people don't like green, so we put this. But we'll certainly look at the colors, and maybe we can talk about them before our next hearing. You know, probably not change, fully change the architecture, one of the things you can kind of see even Cabana Southern, it doesn't, the renderings probably don't look, you know, as bright as if you look at some of these, but there's a lot of articulation within those colors, we've done a lot of pop-outs, and there's a lot of different materials going on, so it will look better, I think, as you see it, and even Cabana Hayden, it's a very kind of funky, kind of modern look, but we can certainly kind of think about, show you some pictures, and come back in October and show you some other pictures.
Okay, and then, when somebody else mentioned something about the bus stops, and that's not covered in, I don't know if there's somebody from the city that can tell us that I know that we are redoing our bus stops that are, to give better shade protection, and if the ones that are on Kyrene or Guadalupe, are they part of that first phase?
They are, sorry.
Eric and I have many conversations about this, so Eric would like to come down here, because he and I talk all day about this.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Eric dropping all my stuff.
In his water bottle.
Mayor, Councilmember Garland, I'm Eric Iverson, Transportation Sustainability Director. We do have a prioritization of all of our 400-plus bus stops in the city that do not have shelter, and we have, the ones in this area are on the list. I can provide the council with that list for Monjul to share at the next council meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. And while you're here...
Yeah.
Can we look at also the traffic, the speeds, if there's any additional calming things that we, that can be done with or without the approval of this property? It sounds like the residents would like to see some type of traffic calming, can we look at that also?
Absolutely, and we, I gave my card to one of the residents earlier who was asking about the specific accidents that Councilmember Adams had been inquiring about, so we will look at that.
Okay, that's all my questions, thanks, Monjul, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Amber?
I just have one quick question, so when you're talking about renting these units, you are renting the units by the entire unit, correct? You are not renting them bedroom by bedroom?
No, no, they are rented for a year by the entire unit. But I was just saying in terms of, you know, if you only have to pay $1,200, you know, somebody can afford that by themselves. Certainly, people, what, when we talk about kind of what else is existing on Kyrene, just 30 seconds of this, you know, I also, like Councilmember Keating, lived at Elliott's Cross, I don't know where that's where he lived, but I lived at Elliott's Crossing, you know, 20-something years ago, and the rents at Elliott's Crossing for a 30-year-old apartment are gonna be the same as like a brand-new apartment, so that's kind of what we're talking about, and those are also higher. And so, you know, Elliott's Crossing, three-story building, this is, you know, that's what we're trying to bring in new apartments, but yes, no, I'm just saying, you know, new teachers, a lot of young teachers, as you may know, they like to have a roommate, and so just saying, you know, that helps with them, or, you know, whomever, or they can afford by themselves, we've said, if you have, your, you know, daughter just graduated can afford, you know, $1,000, $1,200, this is a place for her to go.
I was just asking that, because I know that a lot of the apartment units around ASU, which you would consider student housing...
Yes.
They rent them by bedroom, and it's specifically for college students, because this is not like that, you know, that alleviates that for me as well, and I also love a lot of the sustainability stuff in there, especially the Waverstein aspect of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Council...
She answered kind of my question.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else? Just a couple of quick things, Ms. Fosse, just questions that were actually, that were raised by the residents, I think you already addressed my question about rental prices, and maybe this also might be more of a question too for our staff potentially, maybe for Mr. Tamiylevich perhaps, because there were questions raised about the quality of the construction and the retention areas, like are all of those things being met from a staff standpoint? I mean, I'm assuming this is, you know, this is getting a, an approval from staff as saying to go forward with the project, but I guess I should just ask on the record, does this meet all of staff's checklists when it comes to construction and quality of building materials and having the proper retention areas and things of that nature?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council Jeff Tamiylevich, Community Development Director, obviously this is not going through the building permit process at this time, but we anticipate it will. We've looked at the retention, we think it will meet the requirements that are necessary by code, we also believe that all building requirements will be met, I mean, they will be required to be met.
Sounds good, okay, thank you, appreciate it. One other quick question too, just, because this came up with several of the speakers, Ms. Fosse, regarding the green light, building the building and potentially then selling it, is there any intention at this point for a green light to build the property, then flip the property, or, and then, I mean, obviously we know that that can't be spoken for forever, but is there sort of any immediate thing in your business plan about how we're gonna build this, and within two or three years, we're going to sell it off?
No, Mayor, there's no plan to build and flip this building.
Okay, sounds good, okay. That's all the questions that I had of what was, oh, Councilman Hatch?
One more question, this is for, I guess, our, for, not Jeff, but transportation, traffic. Is it, because I, we did hear that they were saying that they were concerned about it, you know, going through the neighborhoods instead of going through, is there some way that we can look at that to make sure that the neighborhoods, you know, how the traffic will be flowing through, if it has to go through the neighborhoods, are they cutting through it, and just check with that with traffic? There you, thank you, Eric.
And, you know, Eric, oh, I was gonna say, I'm just gonna answer one question for Eric, and then Eric can talk about the neighborhoods, but, you know, one of the things that we've done is, as you know, and we're gonna talk about something else later, you know, we have, we're at a light, right? So the light will really help us kind of flow with the traffic, and so there shouldn't be, I mean, there's, this, again, like a, you know... you know, to Vice Mayor's point, like, I live next to a Walgreens, you know. That Walgreens is a lot more, it's right next to somebody's backyard, and it has a lot more traffic going in and out than this will. But the traffic, again, at the corners with the light configuration helps that flow. There should be no need to kind of cut west to go east, because the site's not that big. But, I'm sorry, and I'll let Eric answer.
No, I'll get, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, thanks for that question. We will, as you know, we have the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. We will look at the streets in the neighborhood and have our traffic engineering team kind of do a little assessment, be able to provide some statements for, for Ms. Fos. And then possibly, if there are issues, we can put that in the long-term list for our look into improvements.
Sounds good. All right. Anything else, Ms. Fos?
I'm done. But thank you. We'll be back in a couple of weeks with some pictures and colors.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. And the only thing I have is not a question for you, but it is just one quick point regarding the traffic issues, because this is something, you know, this is, I said, this is my 13th year up here in some way, shape, or form. And this is one of the things that I do get concerned about, because people talk many times about the worry, and I think the concern is sincere regarding traffic. But in all of the traffic studies I've seen, not specific to this project, so I'm not specifically referencing the traffic study that this developer gave me, but the reality is, looking at these things, commercial shopping centers, when it comes to grocery stores and other related stores, have far higher traffic counts than actually building multifamily housing. Because many times with multifamily housing, people are actually leaving all at one point in the day to go to work, and then coming home all at the same time. Whereas if you have a shopping center where you've got a grocery store, kind of a large-scale one, or other kinds of restaurants, or other retail shops, you've got people coming in and out all day long, and it contributes to a much higher traffic count and much more potential, I think, for traffic accidents and things of that nature. Not that I'm opposed to grocery stores or other kinds of restaurants and retail opportunities, but a lot of the things that our staff has had to deal with from a traffic mitigation standpoint are areas where I would say on the northwest side of rural and southern, where we have a large grocery store and retail center, where there had been major concerns raised by the residents in those adjacent areas, talking about people making left turns and just sort of extremely high traffic counts because of deliveries and people going in and out of that shopping center all day. We had a situation by the Trader Joe's Shopping Center by me in North Tempe, right around University and Rural, where you have a Raising Cane's on that corner, and a whole host of other businesses, of where the traffic would actually back out of that area onto University Drive, which was a major issue. I'm glad that Raising Cane's is that popular, and that so many people wanted to go to that shopping center. That actually happens to be the Trader Joe's I regularly shop at. But that was actually where we had to get our traffic mitigation folks involved, because we had people backing out all the way onto a major arterial. I've never seen that issue happen with a multifamily complex, whether it's rental or homeownership, but I have seen it happen many, many times. We were talking about a large commercial shopping center, where people are many times there between 6:00 AM and 10:00 or 11:00 PM each and every day, Monday through Sunday. And so I guess that's just sort of my challenge. I, I do absolutely understand the residents' concerns about the traffic in their area are sincere. I'm not saying that they're not. But I'm just saying, time and time again, in every study that I've seen over the last 12 and a half years, along with what some of these specific situations I've seen, the bigger issues that we typically have when it comes to traffic mitigation and having to implement traffic calming procedures in a really serious way, really quickly, is usually when we have commercial shopping centers, but not when we have multifamily complexes, where people are typically leaving all at one time in the morning and coming home in the evening, especially now that we have a lot of people now working flex schedules, and many folks who are working 100% from home in the first place. So I just had to make that comment, because it's just something that, I, I, I hear that, and I understand the concerns, and I understand the concerns are genuine and sincere. But I just think that all the evidence that I've seen over the years says that when it's, when you have a commercial shopping center, you're gonna have a much exponentially higher traffic count than when you have a multifamily complex. I just felt the need to put that out there. I've got many other comments, but frankly, we've got another hearing coming up on this for October 1st, so for the purpose of time, I will save those comments for that point. With that said, anyone else, or obviously, once again, not taking any vote on this this evening, any final comments by council? Okay. Sounds good. Once again, I just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for October 1st, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is introduced and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance repealing Section 19-13 Drivers' Files to be maintained from Article 2 Traffic Administration and Enforcement, Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Multimodal Traffic of the Tempe City Code. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Councilmember City, comments or discussion? Hearing none. The second and final public hearing on this item is also scheduled for October 1st, 2024. The last item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer a portion of the capital improvement program, project number 5511142, to the Economic Development Property Management Cost Center. These funds will support the continued operation of the North Tempe Food City Plaza until the property is redeveloped. This is also a public hearing item. If there's any public testimony, please feel free to get my attention. Seeing that, I will go ahead and close that portion of the hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? All right, seeing none. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for October 1st, 2024. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption, so votes on these items will be taken tonight. First item under the section is 8C1. I just want to note that the applicant is requesting a continuance to the October 1st, 2024 Regular Council Meeting. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion on the request to continue? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion on item 8C1 for a continuance? It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. My apologies, I was on the wrong screen. And there we go. I just did. And that item also passes seven to zero. All right. The next item under the section then is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance requesting a zoning map amendment from AG to PCC1, with a planned area development overlay and development plan review for a new single-story commercial development with four buildings on 3.75 acres for northwest quarter of rural and Warner, located at 862 East Warner Road. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham. Ms. Fos, good to see you again.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, members of the city council. For your record, my name is Monjul Fos, law firm of Gamage and Burnham. I made a full presentation last time, so I don't know that anybody will have any questions. I do have one interesting fact, that we have named the site. The community has voted South Tempe Square. So
Hmm, I like that.
That's the name. So that was South Tempe community. I want to thank everybody watching and in the South Tempe community for all their help. We're really excited. Start hopefully moving soon, and we hope to begin construction in January. I know there was some questions, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I've talked to numerous folks from South Tempe, and they're so excited. Every one, single one of them is so excited to have this project get going. So thank you for your, your tenacity, for, I know it took a while for us to get there, but they're so happy about it. So thank you for bringing this project forward. I will be making a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Keating. More comments? Vice Mayor Garland?
I just want to say, thank you so much for all the work that you put into this. But most important to me is the work that you have done with the residents, the neighbors that are right around there, and how often that you reached out to that neighborhood that's there, and to having, holding the meetings that were at the, I don't know if it was a church or school, I can't remember. But thank you so much for the outreach, because as much as we all would like to see something on that corner and not just dirt, and looking forward to what you're gonna be putting there, it's so important that you, you really did that work to do, and worked hard to get the residents to listen, to talk to you, and to help make the decisions on, and now naming it also. So I appreciate that, and I'm really looking forward to this going in. So thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you all for all your help. I know it's been a long time coming, so I appreciate all your patience and your assistance.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Keating?
Yeah, I just kind of want to echo some of Councilmember Garland's comments. It's been a long time coming, as you said. You did a lot of work to get that neighborhood on board. I am disappointed that Keating's corner didn't end up winning the vote for the name, but
That was second, it was second.
It was second?
Very, very close second.
It was a close margin. I'm gonna need to see the cross tabs on that. But anyway, I had a Diablo meeting last night, and a lot of the residents kind of live down there, or Diablos live in that area, and they certainly frequent a lot of South Tempe businesses. And they were all very excited about this, that there's gonna be something there finally. So it's a corner that, I think I told you a year ago or so, maybe that, I didn't think anything was ever gonna go there. So well done to you, and I've been looking forward to supporting it.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yep, Councilmember Amber?
Yeah, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I moved to Tempe from Louisiana in 1998, and that lot was a dirt lot. It has not changed since, and I'm not even sure how long it was a lot, dirt lot before I got here, but just an eyesore. And I'm really looking forward to what you guys are gonna do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, just wanted to make sure we, we didn't call for public comment. I'm not sure if there's any
Nope, that's next. Oh, no, I have not forgotten, Mr. Anderson, don't worry.
I thought he was gonna make my second.
The second I saw him, I'm like, what have I done wrong right now? It's like, Dad is scolding me. So, all right. With that said, before I get into any more trouble here, before I get into more trouble, Mr. Anderson, I will go ahead and do exactly what you said here. I'm gonna open up the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing that, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. That being said, I'll just make a comment too. I really, to Councilmember Amber's point, I mean, I moved to Tempe in 2003, and to her point, I thought that's been a dirt vacant lot the entire time I've been here. I don't know how long it's been a vacant dirt lot, but the ability to actually have additional food and beverage and retail options for the residents of South Tempe, I think is a huge win for this community. And as much as there's a lot going on in the downtown, obviously Apache Boulevard with the presence of light rails getting a lot more in the way of shopping and food and beverage, I do believe that the residents of South Tempe deserve to have those amenities directly in their neck of the woods without having to come north. We obviously welcome them to come north and spend their money there as well, but it's nice to have those items right in your own backyard, where you can access them through a short car ride, or walking, or through bicycle perhaps. So just want to make sure that I say that I'm very, very excited about this. And I think it will also very much work in synergy with the opposite corner, where you currently have the Postino and Ghost Ranch and Craftsman and other shops. Sometimes, as we all know, for those of you who've tried to go down there after 2:00, 3:00 o'clock on a Friday afternoon to meet someone, you can't get in that shopping center, because it's one of the very few options in that area. And so many of us sometimes have driven around in a circle for five to six minutes before giving up, and then changing and going to a different place. Having the other options right across the street will, I think, add even more synergy to that corner, and it will frankly increase revenue in that area, but it's just gonna be a huge win. So I'm just really excited. And once again, thank you, Ms. Fos, for your work, and thank you once again for working with the neighbors on this. So greatly appreciated. And I apologize, Councilmember Keating. Keating's corner was a very close second. With that said, I know we had a motion and a second on this already, so I'll go ahead and call a question. Let's, let's vote. And that item is approved, seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicle and Multimodal Traffic, Article 5 Speed Regulations, Section 19-63 Speed Limits enumerated of the Tempe City Code. This is also a public hearing item. If there's any public testimony, please feel free to get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close that. Councilmember City, comments or discussion?
Somebody.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving proposed updates to Chapter 14A of the Tempe City Code by amending Section 14A-1 relating to purpose and intent, Section 14A-2 relating to definitions, Section, Section 14A-3 relating to Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Preservation Officer, Section 14A-4 relating to designation of landmarks, historic properties, and historic districts, Section 14A-6 relating to guideline standards and process for review of alteration to new construction, Section 14A-7 relating to demolition and removal, Section 14A-9 relating to maintenance and repair, and Section 14A-11 relating to violations. This is also a public hearing item. If there's any public testimony, can you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. Councilmember City, comments or discussion?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Keating, and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. You know, I will, I will do that promptly after the meeting, I promise, Vice Mayor. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a water line easement located on the east side of Hardy Drive and the south side of Elliott Road. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Councilmember City, comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. Want to again, just alert the crowd that this is also my favorite portion of the meeting, where we get to the constant abandonment of water line easements. Yes. All right then. How about then, we go to item 8C6, which is, of course, to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a water line easement north of Rio Salado Parkway and east of Smith Road. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, shockingly. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Amber?
I'm enthusiastic.
And a second by Councilmember Chin. Thank you so much. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C7, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 3031 South Hardy Drive, and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing. Councilmember City, comments or discussion?
Moved to approve.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. Councilmember Keating?
Oh, sorry.
Ah, there we go. And that item passes seven to zero. That brings us to item number nine, Current Events, Council Announcements, and Future Agenda Items. Councilmembers may also request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. I will now call upon councilmembers for their comments. And this evening, I will start with Councilmember Adams. I try to keep, I try to keep everyone off balance up here, so.
I like it. Okay, my first announcement is Trees for Tempe update. The weather is cooling off, and that means it's the perfect time to plant trees in Tempe. The best time is, specifically is from September through November, and again, from February to late April. It's important that we, we plant the right tree in the right place, and, because of our climate, obviously. Richard Atkins is our tree specialist at the city of Tempe. His phone number is 480-350-5227. And you can email him, or call him, and ask him about what trees the city is recommending that can live through this incredibly increasing hot climate. So we want to make sure that we get the right trees for the right spots. My next announcement is Arts in the Parks. This fall's Arts in the Parks will run through early November, and it'll feature hands-on art, art activities, live music by the local bands, food trucks, and interactive, interactive discussions by a local artist. So I would improve, and I would, I'm sorry, I'm a little tired tonight. I would encourage you to go. I've gone to many Arts in the Parks, and they're really a lot of fun, and you really get to know your neighbors, and you can bring your dogs out, and it's really a great activity. So Steve, you can check it out. Next week, we have Mary and Moses Green Park on Tuesday, at Scudder Park, and, and on Wednesday, let's see, Scudder, oh, I'm sorry. On Tuesday, we have Mary and Moses Green Park on Tuesday, Scudder Park on Wednesday, and Optimus Park on Thursday. So we have three nights next week for Arts in the Parks. All events will be held from 5:30 to 7:30. So we hope to see you there. Finally, this is one of my most exciting dog barking. Am I missing something?
You didn't say dog barking. That's my park.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, it wasn't on my notes. So I guess I should read the slides. There, okay. All right. Thank you for, thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Chin. And this Friday at 5:30 at Kiwanis Park, we are having a groundbreaking ceremony to open up our, one of our few South Tempe parks, dog parks. So I'm super excited about that. It's gonna have water features, plenty of shades for the pups, and they'll be able to unleash, you'll be able to unleash the dogs and let them run and hang out, and you'll also be also be able to meet your neighbors. So, Friday at 5:30, if you want to come on out, we're gonna be having groundbreaking then. So, I'd love to see all of you out. Thank you, and that, and that's the end of my announcements this evening.
Sounds good. Thank you, Counselwoman Adams.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up, Counselwoman Chin.
No announcements, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next up, Counselwoman Hodge.
I'm surprised you forgot Vice Mayor Garland. I thought she's always next.
No, she's, she's on my list.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, you know what, I just want, all I have is to talk about the Envision Center that's now open. It was an exciting time, and I think this is gonna be really great for our residents. We want everybody to come out. It's right off of Apache Boulevard. It's, it's a community resource. It, just go out and see it. It is phenomenal when you go in there and look at it, and the, the energy and the thought that was put in it. So, thank you, Tim Burton, who's sitting there, and, and all the work that you and your team has done to put that together. And then, it's gonna, I can already tell, I already had one of, one of this, one of, one of my neighbor's friends went out there and her children, and she's like, I can't wait. My child is really excited about this. This is really something that excites my child, my children. So, I'm just excited to have it for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselwoman Hodge. Next up, Counselwoman Amber.
Hey, I'm not sure if anybody noticed, but on Tuesday, we took a super cool picture with all of us with our vote hats on, because it was the National Voter Registration Day on Tuesday. So, this, I wanted to make sure that everybody, you know, in order to make sure that you get your, your vote counted, these are all of the dates. So, the registration to actually register to vote is October the 7th. On October the 9th, your ballots, if you have signed up to get your early ballot, it's going to be sent to you there. And if you are signed up to get an early ballot, I would highly suggest that you sign up for their alert system. I did get a text message today and an email from the county recorder's office saying that my ballot was getting ready to mail, and it is incredibly cool, because once you mail it back in, they will send you a text saying that they got your ballot. They will send you a text when they've verified your signature, and then they will send you a text when they tell you that they've actually counted your ballot. So, you, every step of the way, you absolutely know, you absolutely know what's going on with your ballot. So, these are the rest of the dates. October 25th is the last day to request to get an early ballot. You gotta mail them back by the 29th. If you don't, then you need to bring it in by hand on Election Day, and Election Day is November 5th. So, no matter who you're gonna vote for, I'm just asking you to please go and vote.
Thank you so much. Next up, Vice Mayor Garland.
Thank you. I just have one announcement. We will, if you think about it, we have a lost art of writing letters and writing cards, and actually putting them in the mailbox and sending them to somebody. How often do you get happy birthdays by an email, by a text, or from the web, sending you an electronic birthday card? You have the opportunity to make a birthday card, or buy a birthday card, and send it to one of our residents. She's retired US Navy, US Air Force Major and World War II Veteran, Mrs. Fannie McClendon, lives in Tempe. During World War II, then Lieutenant Clendon was serving in the Women's Auxiliary Army Corps, assigned to the 6888th Central Postal Battalion in Europe. The mission of the trip, of the 6888 was to ensure that all the mail from home was delivered to our troops. The motto of the 6888 became "No Mail, Low Morale." Their success meant that millions of letters got through to boost the spirits of those on the front lines. And you can read more about that online. There's a website. It's www.womenofthe6888.org. Mrs. McClendon is now one of only two living members of the 6888. She'll be 103 years old on the 22nd of September. And Mrs. McClendon loves to get mail. So, I'm asking you to please take a moment and write a birthday wish to her to celebrate her birthday. Let's show the love of our community to this wonderful woman who proudly served our country in World War II. You can mail your cards, address to me. You can write 6888, family and supporter here at City Hall, and I will take those cards and take them to her house and deliver them to her, the care center where she's at, and deliver to her. Let's really make this birthday big for her. And it's so important that we make sure that, we always say when things happen, oh, we're never gonna forget. But you know what? We do. Let's not forget. And let's send her a birthday card. Let's make this difference. I will tell you that I had put this on my art, my work social media for the city of Tempe, and I walked out my front door this morning, and somebody dropped a card off at my front door. So, I have my first card in hand. So, please, if you have the time, please, let's make this a really special birthday for Mrs. McClendon. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up, Counselwoman Keating?
No announcements.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir. I don't have any announcements either, which means that'll take me to item number 10, Public Appearances. I have one public appearance this evening, and that is Melissa Balkin. Please come.
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back. State your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
I'm Melissa Balkin, again, from Tempe, and I just wanted to share a couple more Cabana Kyrene comments with you guys that I didn't get to.
I don't think we can do that.
Oh, I was told I could before, so that's why I prepared them.
Let's see. Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, no, that, that agenda, we'll open public comments for items not on the agendas. We've already had the comment on the agendas.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Sorry about that. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none. That brings me to the next item, of course, which is number 11, Adjournment. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for October 1st, 2024. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.